If anybody has a phone, please turn it to silent and we'll recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and then I will turn the workshop over to Chris.
Start the, um, we're gonna have to start the board meeting today with a workshop really addressing irrigation in the district and we're gonna have recently Tetra Tech completed hydraulic model looking at the irrigation system. And when they, when they recently delivered that, it has a lot of capital projects in it to increase the supply in the system. A lot of those projects have already been included in the district's CIP. They're gonna talk about that work product and what they found. And I'm gonna give just a brief two or three minute overview on the system history and then bring Kenny up to talk about some of the efforts we're working on on the demand side of the Tetra Tech system. Bring Tyler up.
All right, I'm up. Uh, for the record, my name is Tyler Weiner, I'm at Tetra Tech. Um, I've got some color copies of what's in your board book that I'm gonna pass out because some of it is color coded, so I'm gonna make sure you guys get that up.
One for you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
One for you, sir. I'll get that.
One for you.
I do have one for me.
Thank you for doing this, much better.
No problem. Um, so this is basically just a very brief presentation, just to kinda go over generally what we did and what our findings were for the irrigation model. So what we did was we did an update to the existing irrigation hydraulic model. Um, if you could go to the next slide, please, sir. So just kind of a high level summary, um, this model was, I think it actually developed prior to 2009. It was originally developed by Johnson and then it was updated periodically through the years. The last update we did was around 2016 when we went through and added the irrigation main, the transmission main goes down Griffin Drive. We added a bunch of other communities and then more recently, uh, just recently in 2018, we went through and added all of the remaining communities and also provided notes for the build out conditions of the communities that we know are coming up from here on out. Go to the next one. So basically what we did was, um, this is just a snapshot from the model, but, uh, what we did was we assigned demands at all the different points and then went through and completed the calibration of the model. What you see right there is those are where the data loggers were placed. And the purpose of that is basically you get the model, it fits out what they think it is, and then you go out in the real world and you figure out if what you modeled matches what's out there. And usually it's pretty close, but it requires some tweaking due to maybe pipe sizes are a little bit different than what the plan said or maybe the valves are a little bit old or not open all the way or a whole bunch of different things that could happen. So, um, on the next slide, this is kind of a summary of the, of the data after we calibrated it. So basically, there's a bunch of numbers that may not make a lot of sense, but the summary of it is, is that basically every area was calibrated between two percent of what was modeled versus what we really found out there. So it's pretty close. Um, the next slide, uh, this is just kind of another piece of data to show you. These are the pressure curves to basically show what you already know, which is that your peak irrigation demand is during the nighttime when irrigation is going on, obviously. Um, so starting on the left-hand side, that's at 12:00 AM. Uh, you dip down to about sixty and fifty-five and then a couple of low spots hit as low as thirty-eight, I think, was the lowest that we recorded. That's on an average. Um, those different curves there, those are each site that we recorded individually, so they're all pretty close to one another. Um, the next slide here, sorry, I don't know why that image did that. Um, but in the handout that I gave you, it's the same map. So if you wanna go to this one, basically it's, uh, it's color coded by pressure, which is kind of the end game here to try to, you know, what we're looking to do, we're looking to see if we have adequate pressure and adequate flow throughout the system. So the short answer is that you do in most locations currently. As I said previously, I think the lowest reported data we have is like a thirty-eight average, um, which is not bad. It's on the lower end and that was in the extremity of the systems. Obviously, it kinda makes sense the farther out you go, the least pressure you're gonna have. That was in the Casella-Materita area, I believe is where that one was. Um, Stony Brook is another area which just due to its location being furthest away is, uh, is another area of low pressure. So, uh, moving forward from there, oh yeah, sorry, little circle. So that's just like I said, that's the Pareto-Materita area and then if you click one more, um, that's the Stony Brook-Hampton Park area. And those are just the areas that we found to have, uh, not necessarily low, but lower pressure than the remainder of the system. Go to the next one. Um, just kind of, uh, you know, ten thousand little summary here. Uh, basically your system is adequate to supply the current demand. I say current because at build out, there are some areas that are going to have issues that, uh, that should be addressed preemptively. Um, as I said, areas at the extremities provided a little bit lower pressures than some other areas and future demands will require improvements. So going to the next one. Uh, proposed improvements, so basically we kind of threw three options out there. Option one is you make upgrades to the high service pump station. And I will tell you that that's, uh, kinda maybe not a cost effective solution, especially considering you replace a bunch of pumps out there this year and over the last two years, so don't necessarily recommend that one. Uh, option two is to construct a new irrigation main. That is something we've talked about before and that's actually a focus of the CFP analysis that we're doing separately from this. So what that is, is it would potentially interconnect Griffin Drive all the way up to Stony Brook through the FPL easement, should Gateway require the FPL easement or should you decide to construct a main there? And that would actually serve two purposes. One, it would provide better looping to the system to provide more flow up north. And two, um, during wet season times and wet season peaks coming from the wastewater plant, it would give you an area to dispose of that reuse if you have that need to do so. So it's kinda two bird, one stone situation. Um, then number three, uh, this is always an option, not necessarily a popular one, but to reduce demands and peaks. So that's basically, uh, implementing a stricter watering schedule, trying to limit, um, different areas to water at different times, not necessarily have the whole community odd even operate on the same day, but maybe go locally and try to change it to where one area of the system operates X day, another area operates on Y day, that sort of thing. Um, it's difficult to implement that for obvious reasons, just because you're relying on people to do that. Sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't. So, uh, those are basically the three options that, uh, that are available to you. Um, that's kind of a brief summary. So I think that's it. Questions?
Yeah, Tyler, Pareto, Pastoya and Casella aren't showing, is that because they're on a master meter?
Yes, sir. So, um, what we have shown is all of the infrastructure that is owned by Gateway. So out in Pareto, where you see those roads that are constructed there, where we ended our model is at the master meter that supplies water to Pareto.
So they could have problems internally in any one of those three and we're, we're, we're not seeing it at this point in time.
That's correct. So, um, the, the downside to a master metered system, uh, on the user side is that Gateway is their responsibility at the master meter. Uh, I couldn't even tell you what size piping the developer built because it's not a Gateway asset. So it's possible, but we can tell you with reasonable amount of certainty that, um, if there is a problem, it's, it's not a problem from Gateway.
So the pipe that's in the ground in Pareto, Pastoya and Materita, from the point of connection with the master meter all the way to the, what? There's not a meter at the house. Uh, where, where, where does the HOA's responsibility stop and, uh, the private property owner's responsibility begin? The property line?
Good question, I would say the property line.
Uh, covenants may actually indicate that depending on how they have it, the master association and doing the neighborhood may indicate the responsibility.
Well, I'm assuming that they've got that the water that goes to the common area is coming off that same pipe that's feeding the houses.
Um, yeah, certainly, I mean, I'm, I'm sure it does. Um, the covenants may indicate where.
Controlors that got.
Who's responsible? Yeah, but it's, uh, it's not something that we included in this.
Can you give Mr. Bass?
Okay. Go ahead, bite over.
Okay. Um, these are my questions, I have nothing to do with it. So, Mr. Weiner, um, page two, you talked about, uh, this could be the result of an unidentified partially closed valve. If that was partially closed, was that reported so that it could be corrected?
Um, well, it was reported in the fact that we wrote it in the summer report, but there, it's hard to say with certainty why one area is a little bit off calibration wise. It could be a whole lot of things. Um, I know when we did the utility evaluation like two, three years ago, uh, we went out and operated and checked a lot of valves. With that effort, I know that Gateway has a program right now to exercise valves that they do constantly. So it's probably on the unlikely side that it's a partially closed valve. It's not impossible, it may be possible. Um, but it'd be hard to identify specifically which one.
I have one more question. Okay. And it says on the same page, because continuous flow measurement data was not available and I wanted to know why that wasn't available. Is it because of the time of the year that this was done or it's just that it doesn't continuously flow?
Um, no, so on the flow monitoring data, what we did was we got the data done from Gateway for what they pump out, but it wasn't like a, a constant flow of data. It was, I can't remember if it was every hour, every three hours, but it wasn't instantaneous data just because that'd be an enormous chunk of data. So I think it was every three hours, so we ended up getting.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Thanks for that.
Yeah, um, and I just don't know a lot about this. I don't know if it's a you question or if it's a Kenny question, but, yeah. In, uh, in your data analysis, you broke it down by community. Can we isolate the system by community or is it zoned?
Um, isolate like from a modeling standpoint?
No, isolate flow.
Um, yeah, I mean, yeah, you could. Yeah, I mean, we could.
From the, from the system, can we, just hypothetically, can you, can you restrict flow to certain zones or to certain communities at certain times?
Uh, you could, but you would have to install either flow control valves or something like that. So yeah, you can.
System has the capability, but we may not have the infrastructure to support that.
Get to the main one.
I mean, you could, I've, I've seen communities, I'm pretty sure Lee County does this actually. I know Collier County does because they have both meter irrigation majors.
They shut off like.
They can, they limit a, a number of things. They limit how much pressure you can distribute at, they limit how much flow you can distribute. So they have flow reducing and pressure reducing valves at points of locations specifically because they've got big meters and they don't want, you know, when an eight inch meter comes on, it's a big meter. When an eight inch meter comes on, they don't want that robbing the pressure from everyone else that may be downstream. So they limit how much water can come out of that at certain times. Um, Gateway doesn't have those installed in the system right now, but it is something you can install.
I was just curious. And do, Kenny, do we have, I don't know if it would be informative for the board to, to see what the irrigation infrastructure looks like as far as, you know, the flows and are there certain, I don't know what equipment mains?
System and pipes? You can consider that on the wall.
Pipes and controls, you know, where there's.
So yeah, I mean, we can, um, there's a lot of different maps of different things we can print out and, uh, and provide. But, uh, one of the things is a map of, you know, all the different pipe sizes, kinda like that, more updated. Um, you know, we can spit out one of those. This one was specific to pressure just because that's kind of the, you know, underlying concern. But, uh, there's a lot of different things that we can spit out and just try to rapidly, you know, show if you like.
Mr. Bass, do you have any questions or comments?
Well, I just wanted to compliment Tyler for finally giving me a, a reason that we might wanna consider taking the FPL easement. I've been asking for a bunch and bunch for a plus or minus and never received one. That's the first one I've seen that has a plus for it.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Tyler?
Tyler, when you did the pressure, you're using nodes throughout the system?
Yes, sir.
Was, was there any allowance for water use of the fifteen hundred, uh, ERUs that are yet to be built?
Yes.
Those are in there?
Yes. So there's, there's a whole bunch of different scenarios. I think we just included like one or two in, in what we gave you, but there's a whole bunch of different scenarios that we modeled. One being, uh, you know, current flows, one being build out as we see it and then projection year to year based on growth from that. So yes, the future flows have been incorporated within that model.
Did number two, option two, did that alleviate the pressure issues when you implemented, ran the, the scenario? You, using option two, assuming it was considered?
Yeah, I mean, it depends on a lot of things. It depends what size pipe you build, it depends who's watering at the same time, all that. But in general, um, I think we modeled, I can't remember if it was a twelve or sixty, I apologize. But in general, if you constructed that main, it basically had about a ten PSI boost to those northern areas. Kinda rough numbers there. So in the low areas that we found that were in like a high thirties, usually forty PSI is kinda like a point where you, you know, wanna do something better. That gets you up into the upper forties, closer to fifties, that's, that's fairly decent pressure. So I think the short answer is yes.
Well, with the, with the combination of the FPL loop and the Arborwood loop, that should significantly help at least the west side of Gateway Boulevard.
Yes.
Big time.
Thank you, thank you, Tyler.
You're welcome.
I'm just gonna do, um, use this, this is a Johnson report from two thousand and seven. I'm just gonna go through a few pages to give some historical information on the system and also the way we kinda look at data. And I will address one question you had Kathy about finding a closed valve. When we were out in Pelican and Materita, Pareto area, one time we were checking foreign residents, they were very long in these areas except for this loop street. And so we went back and here we are checking, checking and it turned out one of the valves was mostly closed, so the water was all feeding from the backside and not going through the loop way it was supposed to. And that was all new construction when they first opened it up. But, uh, this is, this is a report from Johnson that they did and, uh, they were, they were basically doing this to look at the rate study for irrigation and to look at the irrigation habits. And that's one thing we're looking closer and closer at is who's using water. You're looking at your lot size, you're looking at your acreage and of course, those calculations are important when you get your water use permit for the Water Management District, how many acres you're actually watering because they do that acreage to determine the quantities they're gonna give you. And here's an old GIS solution for an original permit. Um, and as you can see in Gateway, there's, uh, big chunks of Hampton Park and Stony Brook and Pelican that weren't included in that early model in two thousand and seven when they looked at this. And it was kinda interesting too, another thing you need to look at and another point is too, a lot of this is really data dependent, but thirty-five percent of the lots are larger than ten thousand square feet. And they looked at lot size distribution, you know, how much area is being irrigated, you know, why, why it isn't. That's getting more into the water use permit because they're looking at that acreage and what allocation they're going to give you. Monthly ma- monthly demands. And again, that, the limitations on their study, only the smaller meters were used and they didn't look at the right way. Again, you go back to what your average demand is, what your lot demand is. Now, a lot of this information is very easy for us, I shouldn't say easy, but attainable because of our automated meter system. You can look at it by house, how much water they use and look at it by neighborhoods, look at consumption over the year and look at that seasonal cycle. That's just usage by month, you know, looking at the billing, you see in July and August how it drops and that's with the rainfall. And this was interesting because eighteen percent of the water bills were twenty thousand gallons or more. And the top eighteen percent accounted for fifty percent of the water used.
Can we or do we have, I know this is old data, but do we have anything, 'cause I think I have an answer for that. It's common areas. We have huge common areas as a percentage of the other and not only the usage of the common area, but we waste to the common area.
Well, that's one thing we're getting hold of now.
So that's a problem.
Yep. Not only looking, uh, they're looking at what our customer uses, but looking at the number one user and you're looking at them.
It's us.
Right. And one thing that's kinda interesting, I think it's a fallacy when they looked at this, they were talking about raising the tier rate for those higher users because they would cut back on water consumption and really on the high end, there isn't a lot of elasticity because the people that have the larger lots don't mind spending the extra money to irrigate it. So even if you raise the rates, they don't really lower their consumption. And this was a slide we did recently and it puts it all in perspective. Our monthly average bill for potable water, thirty-three hundred gallons, irrigation, ten thousand, seven hundred. So our customers are using three times the amount of water on their lawns and they are drinking inside their house.
Maybe that what's important?
Well, when people ask me, I told them the irrigation water is more important than drinking water in Gateway. And sorry, this is sideways, but this was just getting into that capital when Tyler was referring to infrastructure improvements because we got a nasty gram from Lee County about the disrepair of our irrigation system in two thousand and fifteen. And the, uh, response came back, um, that, okay, we're gonna go spend one point five million dollars upgrading it. And we spent a considerable amount of money too in the last two years replacing all those high service pumps and the variable frequency drives and the valves on that system. And that's just, just an overview and really the point is there's a lot of data out there that needs mining and pull it together. And Tyler's last point was, you know, you can use demand management, but it's very difficult. And that's what Kenny's here to talk about, what we've been doing recently on the demand management side to keep from having to build that to delay at least or give us some time.
Good afternoon, Kenny Halling, Utility Manager. Just wanted to start out with, uh, I should, I, several questions came up and we started probing around and looking at, looking at everything and we went to Lee County and we went to South Florida Water Management District to get an answer on the effluent to, well, what is the, where is that variance where we use treated effluent? Uh, what is the watering schedule, are we exempt? Uh, we came back, they came back, Lee County came back with the big, kind of, they didn't, weren't sure. They just, we, as a customer, we're, we're required to go by their rules as to we use their treated effluent. And South Florida Water Management issues our water use permit, so kind of both of them came into play. And I just took it to the district attorney to, to come back with an answer. And the answer was that the district can plan, adopt and implement its own watering schedule. Uh, and how we are going to go about doing that. And what I really wanted to touch on was where we are today and what we've been working on. Uh, we started about June, going through the last, last six months, uh, from January to June with the demand 'cause that's when the majority of our demand is, is through the, the dry months. And we realized what we're, what we're coming up against, so we started to prepare for it. And what we really wanted to target, uh, right up front was the master meter communities.
Excuse me?
The master meter communities. Communities with one meter and everybody, and those ones, those ones are, uh, a bit different to deal with than the regular, regular residential because on the residential, you could have ten there that are watering every day and there's no real way to track it. Uh, so we targeted that and we've been targeting, uh, the district. Uh, our watering is, is by far the biggest, we are the biggest user and we've been, we started with moving it, uh, all of, all our, our district watering off of Saturday. Saturday is the biggest demand day, that is where everybody is watering. Uh, and that's where we're hitting seventy-five hundred gallons per minute, eight thousand gallons per minute, that's where we're hitting that. We're hitting them on Saturday nights. So we moved, we started with the district, just irrigation, to move everything off of Saturday nights and let the residents, uh, that are watering have, they, they have the run of the mill with that and the drop, and spreading our demand out. What we would ultimately like, ultimately like to do with the district irrigation is to move it to off of the residential irrigation days, which right now are, if you follow our SCADA system, are two, we're, everybody's watering two days a week, which gives us four days. Uh, Wednesday and Thursday, Saturday and Sunday, odds and even. And, uh, our SCADA system, our data is telling us that's when the majority of everybody is watering on one of those four days. So we wanna spread the demand across that and move it onto non-watering days. And since we are exempt, uh, we can do that very easily. Uh, we're going, we've been working to, uh, looking at several areas that have, are in the same situation in the way they do it. We're gonna be working on that so that at the beginning of the year of two thousand and nineteen, we will be able to give you several options, coherent options of plans of what, you know, which way we should go, what the data is telling us. Um, our, our, our current irrigation system, we have a SCADA system with, it goes, we have nine boxes right now in the field. And what we're doing with each one of these boxes at the lift stations is we're attaching either water, potable water pressure or irrigation pressure. We're tapping into one of those lines and in some cases we've got both lines. We're putting this online and once this goes online, this gives us twenty-four, seven, every day, telling us where exactly the water pressure is for potable and irrigation. Um, once we get, with this year's upgrade, uh, fifty thousand dollars in SCADA, we're adding eight more boxes. So it's gonna give us sixteen data points. We're going to hook those into our pressure system on the water and on irrigation and then start tracking that data. And right away, hopefully, if you find the middle of next week, Stony Brook, which shows up on, on Tetra Tech's model is, you know, very low pressure zone, we targeted that station for the one at the very end that has irrigation. And we've targeted to put that on right away so we can tell by next weekend, we should have, from next weekend forever, we should have data on when, at four o'clock in the morning, what is going on exactly, every day, all day. And once we start getting that, we can start really figuring out what we're gonna do, how we're gonna move around, what we, what way we want to address it. And again, with the AMI system, uh, we can go house to house, whoever has an individual meter and track the use. Getting that data is a task. It takes a lot of time, it takes a lot of energy for someone to sit down and get all this information to us and to, to where we can actually use it. Uh, and that's about right where we're at right now. We had been piloting, we piloted three of the master meter communities, Magnolia Lakes, um, Stony Brook Condo, or Villages of Stony Brook and Devonshire Lakes. Uh, Magnolia Lakes being the, the, where we've seen the most, I would say we've gotten the best results. We moved them off of the peak watering days with the exception of Saturday, Friday and Saturday, and they moved to, uh, Monday and Tuesday with, and we have pressure data there and it's, so far it's worked pretty well. Uh, we were definitely able, when we get into the irrigation months, January to June, when we're really using a lot of irrigation, uh, we would really be able to see where this is going. But right now through the summer months, it's really difficult 'cause it, we, we can just look at historical data. We had not gone a full cycle with our data loggers, uh, like we're going to do this year. So we, we're hoping to bring you a, a plan where we can adopt and then implement. Uh, that's where we're headed with all this.
That sounds great to me. I mean, I think that's, it makes a lot of sense, the, what the plan you're coming up with and what we're seeing. I'll just say for myself, looking at the map and where my house is, I don't notice a lot of low irrigation pressure. But, you know, I realize that it's just one individual in one community, but even though it's, ours are showing as lower pressures, I don't see it when, when I turn my system on.
Yeah, once that, once that box, especially in Stony Brook goes active, we'll be able to track and trend that data. And then on another side, on the potable water side, when we hook a potable water into our irrigation, we can track, trend it and then alarm it. So if we get a break or anything like that, it drops out, we get an alarm and it comes on my cell phone or whoever, all of our cell phones. Uh, it's a great feature, uh, that I'm pushing forward as fast as I possibly can to get this online and running. Because what, especially on the irrigation side, when we have that irrigation data daily, every day, all the time and it's on our screen and we can trend it and track it, it's just invaluable what we'll be able to get out of it.
Questions for Kenny, comments? Go ahead.
Yeah. I'm much more concerned about supply. I think Tyler's report pretty well delineates what we need to be doing to do the pressure. But as you and I have talked, uh, today, uh, our system, and I don't know why, our system is based upon two thousand and six report done by Johnson Engineering that identifies we have nine hundred and eighty acres of turf. When they did that report in two thousand and six, they, I believe, misled South Florida Water Management District and this board by calling it build out. Since two thousand and six, we've added Hampton Park, Timberwood Preserve, Hammock Cove, Pareto, Pastoya, Casella, Materita, and we still have to do Arborwood, West Haven, uh, Worthington and Gateway twenty-twelve LLC. We're nowhere near build out. By my calculations, we've got twenty-five percent more turf acreage that we're applicable to be asking for and should have asked for when we submitted, WSP submitted their report in November of two thousand and seventeen. I think what we need to be doing, and all of this is based upon acreage, however many acres of irrigated turf you have, sets the amount of water you can take out of the ground. Now excluded from that is any reused water you have. In Johnson's report back in two thousand and Now, excluded from that is any reuse water you have. In Johnson's report back in two thousand and six, we were getting a half a million gallon a day from the wastewater treatment plant. Now, we're getting about one point five million gallon a day. That comes into play, that comes into play. But I'm of the opinion that we need to immediately add WSP at their expense, go back and correct their report, and throw in an amendment or whatever to South Florida Water Management District, and let's go for trying to pop this nine eighty up to where I think it should be around twelve or thirteen hundred irrigated acreage in Gateway at present. And then if they want to project those other four, Arborwood, Worthington, West Haven, and Gateway Twenty Twelve LLC, that'd be very easy to do, but you're probably looking at another two hundred acres. Throw that in while we're doing it, and then we can call it build out. But then we could get a larger allowance of water for the sandstone, which is where I'm heading big time. The sandstone is the one supply we have that supplements us enough to get the water out to the field when we're in the dry season and the wastewater treatment plant doesn't match it. Every drop of water we take out of the big Hawthorne, we got chloride issue. And so, the more we use that, the more we have trouble. So, we need to get that eighty-four million gallon a month allowance for the sandstone layer bumped up, and I think maybe going from nine eighty to twelve fifty, whatever the number actually is. We'll do that, then determine whether or not we have a supply issue going forward that even would need to necessitate having restrictions. Because right now, I don't think we're getting our fair share of the water out of ground. Because I think somebody goofed up in the last report and, and didn't explain it. The other thing in the report, and I don't know what problem this is going to have with South Florida, but they indicate that our surface water comes from a lined pond. Our surface water comes from, as we discussed, a six billion gallon and two billion gallon tank that you can see right out our back door. If that lined pond is usable, and if we can talk to South Florida and Lee County, or, yeah, Lee County Utilities, that might be a place that if we're still short, we can pump Hawthorne water, Hawthorne water, nasty water, salty water into that pond, and then blend it such that we can return it back into the system when we need peak flow. I have a feeling that South Florida might not disagree with it, but I have a feeling Lee County isn't going to want to operate and maintain that beast. But the key is right now, I think we need to immediately authorize MSP, WSP, I'm sorry, to go back and resubmit on our behalf an updated report, an amendment, whatever you want to call it, to correct the numbers that are in there to get the greater acreage to cover what Gateway really has as opposed to what we've been approved to have. I think it's, it's significant. A lot of water.
I'll, I'll address that too, because when we hired WSP, it was really to modify the permit, because when the original quantities were permitted in two thousand and twelve, it had a five-year sunset with the quantities, and those quantities were gonna be reduced or pumping by thirty percent. So, when we asked them to modify the permit, it was to bring them back to the original. We didn't alter the acreage, but we could certainly do that. It's also interesting, the staffer, Mr. Tinkle, that worked on the irrigation original permit, worked for another firm when he did the original Gateway Golf Course irrigation permit.
Who's that?
Steve.
Steve.
With WSP. I don't care, his last name, I'll bring it up. And when I looked in the back, he goes, oh, yeah, I'm the one that did that permitting on the golf course.
Yeah, you talked about the golf course wells?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and the whole irrigation system, they were working for.
My, my whole thing is, is that we need to get to South Florida. When I was talking to the people over there on the permit, I didn't talk to the boss, I talked to Cheryl, and she indicated you need to get a modification in here because if you're sitting there at twelve hundred acres, our authorization for the amount of water you can withdraw is going to significantly go up. And that's, that's the key. We need to get that water back in, in our column, not theirs.
Are you trying to get ahead of the curve?
Yeah, trying, trying, for free.
That's really amazing.
For, for free. We've, I think we've got the pressure problem resolved. Supply, I'm scared to death on supply. We put fifteen hundred more homes in here, and it's scary where that water's gonna come from.
They, 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 they added water on the, on the newer ones, but they, it only came out of the lower Hawthorne. That's where it came from. They gave us a substantial increase, but they, it only increased us.
But we can build two more. We've got permits.
We can build two more.
But the trouble is.
Chloride.
It, it's chlorides. Money, if you have money, I, I want to get the money. That's not the problem, it's the chlorides that come out because you can't use it. You have to blend it. And the blend water is the water you want to send out to the people. So, it's, we need, we need a, a way to resolve it, and it's either storage, or it's being able to get the demand, the volume up that we can use higher to where we, we don't have to worry about chlorides.
And, and managing around that. At one point, on that Johnson Engineering, there was five high service pumps, and you'd see that it was rated for ten thousand gallons.
Yes.
And it still is, but in two thousand and fifteen, I believe, they cut out one of the jockey, or the high service pumps and replaced it with a, a jockey pump, which was great thinking. It works great because the majority of the time, the system is not being used.
It was great short-term thinking.
It, it, it runs the system, but it runs the system at a very low pressure, and it maintains the system energy-wise, efficiency-wise, it's all of that. Unwittingly, they shop two thousand gallons of demand, or what we can supply out. So, the, the number for us is eight thousand gallons a minute. And when we hit that eight thousand gallons a minute, that's as much as I can give you. We can have all the water in the world, it does not matter. I can only get eight thousand gallons a minute.
And if, if, what Mr. Tinkle is suggesting, the modification of that permit, is that something that we can do with little effort?
It wouldn't take a whole lot of effort. It's really just a calculation you do with the GIS, and it's looking at a number of lots and the irrigated acreage like that Johnson, you say, you have this many lots, this many square feet, and you add that acreage.
Well, you took what Johnson had in their report, which I don't basically agree with. They said that fifty percent would be the usage. I don't think they're taking any consideration road right of ways. I think they're taking into consideration lot, but not major road right of ways.
They did not address.
Twenty, twenty-five percent to me is a more reasonable number, but let, let's say it's twenty-five percent. And we go out and add in the acreage of development that's occurred since two thousand and six. You can easily get up to eight hundred, nine hundred acres, take twenty-five percent of that, and you take nine eighty, and you quickly get to twelve hundred or more.
Yeah.
And that's all we really want to do is boost that number because it gives us more water that we can withdraw.
Especially out of sandstone.
I'm sorry?
Especially out of sandstone.
Especially out of sandstone.
Sandstone. We have five sandstone wells.
Sounds like a very reasonable thing to try and do.
When, when they do that, we'd have to provide a new model to show the crawl and drawdown and affect how the water's.
What they, they would do would be the quantities, and it may end up involving some additional modeling, because if you're gonna substantially increase.
The allocation.
Luckily, we don't have a lot of adjacent users in the area for the wells.
Well, the downside is, is that they may come back and nick us a little bit on the fact that the wastewater reuse is one point five instead of point five. So, we might get a little bit extra, but they might take some back because of the fact that we're getting that one point five MGD off that wastewater treatment plant.
The one I'd say, I wanted to say, as we go forward, what we're finding and what we, as we look at what we've got, we, if we get all of our residents on the same schedule, and we start, you know, we start doing that, the, the numbers are gonna start bouncing around because everybody, from what we look at, it's all over the place. Who's watering, when, where, why, how much, it's all over the place. And when you get it all in the end grouping, then you can really start to see what it's, as it evolves, it's gonna, that we're gonna come across that, especially when we, if, if we adopt the plan and we enact it, these numbers are gonna, are starting to change around, who's watering when and at what time. I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that.
Yeah, because we've had people that have come in and asked us, one gentleman, I believe, he's, he's here, yeah, there he is in the back of the room, has suggested that we eliminate the tiered system and eliminate basically any controls. At this point in time, I don't doubt that I'm ready to do that unless and until I get that amendment that says we have enough water that we can do that. I'm just leery of the amount of water that we have been unable, as, as I walked down the street today, watching this morning, people watering at a great dag on day of the week.
And we've inlay roads into the HOAs, and I believe that's where we're gonna get the best result, is going after all of the HOAs and letting them know, and then getting them to involve in that. Because they say you go out and it's just rolling down the street, the majority of it.
Not the majority of it, but a good chunk of it is rolling down the street. In our common area, we're, I think we're the biggest guilty party right here. You go up and go up to the Buell Mar, and we're putting, we've got rotor systems out there that are blowing water twenty foot diameter. Well, the median's only twenty feet, so we're watering, trying to see if we can make the pavement grow. We need a new system to put at least in those medians to control the amount of water that we're wasting out there. In wet season, who cares? In dry season, makes a big difference.
And additionally, it helps from a standpoint of the liability under agreement of Lee County.
Oh, yeah.
And not have wet side locks.
Thank God we don't have ice.
Or mold the real dirt and grow, so those are.
I'll, I'll wrap it up with the, with the workshop, and really one final comment that was irrigation related, and I had it up just as, added the agenda, but we did get the preliminary report back from WSP, and no decision making, really, I don't need any discussion at this time, but their estimate after we pulled the pumps and looked at all the equipment, basically to replace those pumps with submersibles, add a new meter, add, add the devices, the electric control boxes, you're looking at the, they're about twenty-nine thousand, six hundred, thirty thousand dollars per well to rehab those golf course irrigation wells. And we aren't sure about the, the condition of the pipeline, but that would be the capital cost. And then if you weren't gonna do that, you'd probably spend three thousand dollars a well to seal them up and then cutting the piping off the top, but that's just a number.
I'm certainly opposed to doing that at this point in time. Can you get ahold of the club, go over that report with them, because I know there is an interest, guys, Green and Grounds meeting yesterday, there is certainly an interest of maintaining one or two of those wells, especially the productive ones. Three of those wells, I can drink a couple beers and produce about as much water. But those two big ones, they would be entertaining, we'd like to see the possibility of doing those. And verify if that twenty-nine thousand dollar cost is factual, or if they can get it maybe less expensive. But then the next one is, and Tony, I think this is a legal issue, do we have to do something in able to show the value of that force main? Right now, that's an unknown. We've not been able to put a test on it because we don't have anything to, to pump the water through unless we take one of our trash pumps out there, hook it up, suction to the lake, and test it. But I don't know that they're going to be able to take or want to take over one or two of those wells, even if they're going to upgrade them, with the risk, because the force main won't hold water. We need, in my opinion, I think we have to take and know whether or not that force main is a usable product.
I think it's important because, again, just if you ever want to use it again, if you're going back and looking at some minutes in the past, the club actually was charged.
They, they were going to be. I couldn't find a record that they ever got a bill.
Okay, but they, they weren't being billed, I was reading some minutes, it indicated they were paying for it. That bill, all, once again, it depends upon ultimately how the board wishes to go. If they wish to operate and maintain it, and they can always accept donations from the club, as well as enter into a use agreement with the club, where the club could fund the upgrades and the district would allow them to.